I call a meeting to order. This is the October Board of Commissioners business meeting. We would like to welcome everyone for coming. This time I turn it over to Vice Chair Sue Lee.
Commissioner Godwin is going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge tonight.
Let us bow our heads. Most holy and almighty God, we thank you for this wonderful and marvelous day. And Father God, because of your wisdom and knowledge and understanding, we thank you for watching over us and keeping us. And we don't want to be selfish, Lord, so we pray for those in Asheville area, Lord, who has lost their homes, lost some family members. We ask truly, Lord, that you watch over them, protect them, encourage them to know you're still God and you still hold us in the palm of your hands. Now bless this meeting, Lord, that all is done, it will be done well, that we do your will. Thank you for Sampson County and thank you for the people who support Sampson County and then thank you for these commissioners, Lord. We ask that you continue to guide us, direct us, and Lord, guide us, because we thank you for all you have done and all you're going to do. We give you glory, we give you honor, in Jesus' marvelous name we pray. Amen.
That is a pledge.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. All right, we've got a couple of walk-ons for the agenda. Let's see, we're going to end the closed session. Then we got the consent agenda approval acceptance of grant funds. And then the third thing is an update for western North Carolina from Director Rick Sauer. We'll put that on item 1C. So I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Senator.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that is passed unanimously. Okay, first thing we're going to do is, I've got recognition for, I'm going to call Sergeant Kenneth Beatty to the front, please. And also at this time, Captain Frederick Hayes of the detention center. The North Carolina Jail Administration Association held its annual banquet on the 23rd of September through the 26th in Greenville. Sergeant Beatty was selected as the North Carolina Detention Officer of the Year for this banquet, and been nominated by his peers. This is a great honor, of course, and is notable, as Sergeant Beatty is the third person in five years to receive this award from Sampson County. That's really awesome. Sergeant Beatty also is from Harrah's area, and of course, he's one of our own, and of course, he's been with us since 2012, and he has moved up through the ranks. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Captain Hayes. He got a couple of words to say.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. I am the president of the North Carolina Jail Administration Association, and I just got voted back in for my second term. It was an honor to even nominate Sergeant Beatty. I have no vote in, whenever they do the voting, I have no count any vote. Basically, I said before the board of directors, and all of the nominees I looked at, and then they select out the one who they think stands out the best. I just wanted to say a few things on Sergeant Beatty. Sergeant Beatty is dedicated. When I say he's dedicated, he comes in on his off day, he works overtime. I couldn't ask for a more dependable sergeant than that. When he left me and decided he wanted to go be a school resource officer, not only did he just, you know, he didn't leave the jail altogether, because three days out of the week, after he would leave the school, he would come back and work the jail from five to 10. So he done that three days out of the week, the whole time he was still as a school resource officer. So then, once he came back, he picked up right where he left off. When I say he picked up right where he left off, he would work on his weekends off, he would come in on, you know, on holidays, he would work, he had the night shift, or he knew night shift for short. And all of this was without asking Sergeant Beatty to do this. So I felt like he was very deserving of that honor. And with me being the president, it was an honor for me to be able to present it to one of my own. And as Sherman Kewell said, we have the honor of having three times in the last five years.
Long on that. It says a lot when our detention facility has not only Officer of the Year, but also the president of the association. That's quite an honor. Congratulations, sir. All right, I'm going to read to you what he was awarded as Detention Officer of the Year, Kenneth Beatty. recognition of your outstanding and dedicated service to this association and our entity. We, the members of North Carolina Jail Administration and administrators association, hereby present to you this plaque as a token of our September the 20th of 2024. Congratulations, sir. We appreciate your service and your dedication. Thank you. One more time. Thank you. Before you go, for Mr. Lee, can I have one of your comments, if you were hurt?
Yes.
Amen.
I think it would be fitting and proper if I said something to Mr. Beatty about his service and how he represents the fourth district, and we do so proud for earning this award. We know the earn, they didn't give it to you, but I know how you earn a award, you have to work for it. And I appreciate all the service that you do and all the dedication that you give to the fourth district, was certainly proud of you. I've been knowing you all my life, and that's a little bit of quiet. He's done it quietly, gently, that's what he is. And I'm just so proud of him. Keep up the good work.
Commissioner Lee, I thank you for when I reached out to her and told her that I would like to see Sergeant Beatty honored for this. She didn't hesitate to say, I didn't give it to the commissioners, but can we put it on their agenda, so I appreciate you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good. Thank you very much. That's certainly a great accomplishment.
Yes, indeed.
Can't say enough about that, especially three out of five years and also having the association president with the same facility. That's quite an honor. At this time, I'm going to call David Clack for the update on the sale of the county property.
We opened bids on September 24th. We've got a new high bid now of $456,800. That bid has been advertised. We will be opening bids tomorrow at 2:00 PM. So if anybody wants to bid, they have until 2:00 PM to get it in. The new qualifying bid amount must be at least $479,690.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, at this time, we'll move on. We'll call Rick Sauer, our emergency services director, give us an update. He made a trip to the western part of the state. Have him fill us in on what he saw.
Just got back about two hours ago, so I threw some notes together and hopefully I get everything. On Wednesday, North Carolina requested incident management team and a USAR team, which is a urban search and rescue team, to Haywood County. I was one of seven people that deployed that Wednesday afternoon and arrived in Waynesville that Wednesday night. Thursday, the 26th, we started working at about 7:00 in the morning, and we worked with Haywood County developing plans discussing evacuations, including the sheriff's department, the detention center, and 911, because they were in a flood plain and they were looking at record flooding in two nursing homes. Luckily, we did not have to evacuate the sheriff's office or 911 center, but we did have to evacuate those two nursing homes. On Thursday afternoon, we relocated the IMT incident management team and the USAR team relocated to a lower part of the county where Tropical Storm Fred in 2021 hit them hard, and they thought that's where a lot of the rescues were going to have to take place. We relocated to a local middle school that was on high ground. The storm started coming in at about 10:00 PM, it started raining noon, it started getting higher winds and more rain, and it started subsiding about 12:00 noon the next day, and we worked throughout the night. During the night, we lost electric power in the school, we lost all cell service, and we lost a public radio system. So we had very difficult times communicating. If it wasn't for Task Force Eight out of the Raleigh Durham area, we wouldn't have been able to talk with each other. That night and the following morning, we did 65 rescues in that 12-hour period. And if we weren't pre-deployed, we probably wouldn't have saved those lives. On Saturday morning, after the dust settled, over half the county was without power. There was limited radio communication service and no internet or cell service in the entire county. And no community, any town, had water or sewer. So we were in dire straits of getting water and wastewater provisions to them, to the point where we were flying Chinook helicopters in and landing on the fairgrounds to get water to the citizens. That Saturday morning, we realized that we were overwhelmed and we needed additional resources. The incident management team requested additional IMT incident management people to come in, and we received a team from Kentucky and Indiana came to assist us. Some of the operations that were going on during the incident, during the peak hours of the incident, we had about 500 people that were responsible for, and we're giving them daily briefings and giving them tasks to do to search for other people. We had four USAR teams, urban search and rescue teams, come in from all over the country, one from Ohio, Wisconsin, Massachusetts, and Maryland. We added another additional task force from Winston-Salem from North Carolina, and one tribal search and rescue team from the Cherry Key Fire Department. During the six-day operation, we had 922 missions, and we sort of managed 48 different agencies outside of Haywood County. And I'm talking just Haywood County alone, and that's where I spent my 13 days. There's all kinds of other operations going on in the rest of part of western North Carolina. We had 700 people reported missing, and the biggest problem with that was lack of communication. If somebody couldn't get in touch with a friend or a relative, they were reporting them missing, and we had to work through all those, and luckily, all those people were accounted for. And again, similar operations going on in other counties. Some of the outcomes, the flooding shattered all records in Haywood County for flood records. On Friday, October 4th, which was our 10th operational period, 95% of the water and sewer were restored in the county, and 96% of the power was restored in the county. And just so everybody knows, we were told that Haywood County is the highest elevation east of the Rocky Mountains. So when we see flooding here, usually it sticks around a week or two. There, all the water was gone within 24 hours, and then we had to go in and search for and try to rescue people. We also unfortunately lost five lives from Haywood County, but like I said, probably more lives would have been lost if we didn't have those resources there early. We had some additional deployments throughout the county. Our 911 manager, Cliff Brown, was deployed to McDowell County. They had their 911 system down, and he helped to bring that 911 system up and stayed there until that was functioning adequately. We had two Sutton Town EMS members and one of Sampson County EMS employees go to western North Carolina, and we had many other EMS employees wanting to go, but just weren't deployed. And we have to measure the resources, and obviously, we needed to make sure we had coverage here in this county. Several fire departments, Newton Grove, Harrells, Taylor's Bridge, and Clinton Fire Departments were deployed to western North Carolina in different locations. Turkey, Halls, and Piney Grove were on standby to deploy, but they did not deploy. The sheriff's department sends six members out to western North Carolina, and along with the fire departments, they're spending four to six days out there, and they're rotating members, so they can, other members can go out to assist as well. The fire departments are also collecting some fire gear. There were some fire departments that were basically wiped out, fire departments that were just damaged beyond repair. One fire department I visited is operating out of a church parking lot with no building, just parking the apparatus outside. So they're doing fundraisers and drives to get older fire gear that maybe they're not using, that they can donate to these fire departments. As you know, we had a large bottled water issue where we were afraid people were going to be in dire straits. There was a fun drive, a water drive, bottled water drive here, and we were able to take eight pallets of water out to Haywood County. Some lessons learned. We had some bottled water and MRE challenges. There was food insecurity challenges that I think we resolved before I left, and that was Ingles is a primary food store in Haywood County. Their distribution center was in Asheville. And I've been sort of isolated from the news, but I'm sure you've seen pictures of what's going on in Asheville and Buncombe County. Gasoline and diesel fuel, we've had the truck in. There was 30,000 gallons in tanks in the ground, but there was no electric to pump the gas out. So we had those challenges as well. As I mentioned, the radio systems, the communication systems, the cell service, a lot is up, but there's still many areas that county don't have cell service right now. I mentioned the power outages, and then media has been a challenge too. Just on my way home, I'm hearing all kinds of reports that FEMA is not on the ground and they're not helping and so on. I can assure you, at least in Haywood County, that FEMA was there and they were doing a phenomenal job of supporting the people there. Some positives, teamwork. We had a whole bunch of people come together that never met each other and worked together to help everybody out. It was a heartbreaking disaster, but sometimes disasters will bring communities together and people together, and that's exactly what we saw. On my way back today, I saw numerous trucks and equipment, electrocuted tree trimming trucks, the National Guard, the military ambulances, fire trucks, NGOs, non-governmental organizations, the Salvation Army, Red Cross, Samaritan's Purse, all kinds of organizations like that. The DOT, 8,000 gallon water tankers were going west, excavators, bucket trucks, food trucks. There's just a phenomenal amount of resources now flooding the area. I also heard on the radio today that there's going to be a concert in Charlotte, that they're going to raise money for victims of Helene. And Golden Leaf, I heard today donated $7.5 million to the relief efforts. So the communities are coming together. One of the biggest lessons learned, and I think for the people of Sampson County and others, is to be prepared. After Katrina, FEMA and other emergency managers came out and said, we need to be prepared. Each individual citizen needs to be prepared for five to seven days, because we may not be able to come and get you. And that's exactly what happened in Haywood County. Because of the rough terrain there, because roads and bridges were washed out, you probably saw pictures of I-40 that is gone, that's going to take, they're saying, one to two, maybe three to five years to repair that and replace that. I-26 in Tennessee, at one point, we were isolated, where one of the incident management teams were preparing to fly in, because they couldn't drive there to get to help us. So be prepared, food and water, medicine, those types of things for five to seven days. And finally, we are watching Hurricane Milton. We don't think it's going to impact us. The National Weather Service is pretty confident it's going to, Florida's going to get hit hard, but we think it's going to go out to sea and not hurt us. So we'll keep an eye on that. I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Anyone have questions? I'm going to make a comment. Haywood County, a good friend of mine, the commissioner there, Tommy Long, I don't know if you had a chance to meet him or not. He lives up on a mountain, and he may not have been able to get down, I don't know. Haven't heard from him. One thing I was going, you mentioned about being prepared. Last year, year before last, Frank Williams, who is president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that was his presidential initiative, was preparedness, and there was a lot of effort put into across the state to be trained, and that's still going. It's available all the time. So we appreciate what you've done, we appreciate the sacrifice and the time, and we're very proud of the way you represented Sampson County and your staffs. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for your support. And we just look at it as, when we have storms here, we're requesting those resources and we're just repaying them and offering.
What goes around comes around, that's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Very proud of Sampson County's contribution.
Yes. All right. Mr. Turrington, you're up next. Give us an update on the Ivanhoe Water Project.
Good afternoon. We bided the Ivanhoe Project back the last September for two weeks. Through October the 3rd, we received bids to 2:00 on October the 3rd. General Statute 143-132 required us to have three bids. We did not have but two bids. So we have had to re-advertise it for two more weeks, and we're going to have the bid open in the 17th now. This second time around, we've not got to have three bids. We can open one, two, every how many we get. I'm anticipating two. So I'm going to need to table this for next month to come to get your approval. I'm anticipating this being within budget with our bids and all. I'm just going to have to repost it and get the bids to 17th. What I would like to get your approval of is after we get the bids to 17th, and I see we are within budget, your permission to go ahead and start advertising and marketing the Ivanhoe area, having a community meeting the 4th of, no, the 7th of November and the 12th of December in that area to hopefully let them people know that when we're going to start, we're shooting to start January the 1st, excuse me, and to let them know. But that will be before your November meeting, but if the 17th, we come within budget, I'm sure you'll probably approve it then, and I would like to go ahead and be ready to be getting the applications in and working with them.
Okay, any questions? So you need a motion to allow the staff to move forward with the project on those dates, November 7th and 12th?
Yes, sir.
December 12th. Okay, make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll give you that approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I also need a motion to table the rest of it to the next month.
Okay, so we need a motion to table the actual ward of the bid.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make that motion as well. Is there a second? I got a second, all in favor? All right, so it's tabled at this point. I think Commissioner Lee has a question.
I will try to secure you a place to have those community meetings on these dates that you just named, the 7th of November and 12th of December.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we're moving now to item three, and Vice Chair Lee.
It is my extreme honor to appoint Jason Smith to serve on our Sampson County Planning Board. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Shows unanimous. Also, I'd like to make a motion to nominate to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Courtney Allen, the Trillium Head with Trillium Hill Resources, and Dr. William T. Van with the Clinton City Schools. He is our Director of Special Programs to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Do I have a second? All in favor? Shows unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, the next thing, item four is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on that? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Senator.
Got it, you got a second here. All in favor, raise your right hand. Consent agenda is approved. All right, this time, Mr. Paulsy.
Mr. Chairman, I have two things. The first thing I would like to do is mention, anytime we're developing a water project or something with 40 miles of line or even less, it gets to be a very tedious process, and any little thing can come up, can set you back and cause some timeframe. I think one of the things I like to do is I like to give a shout out to the Public Works Department, because basically what they've done with the motion that you have passed, they are trying to keep, because we didn't get the three bids to start with, they're trying to keep the project on a schedule that doesn't delay the project any more than it has to. And so I think that's a significant effort on the part of Mr. Turrington and his staff, and I think that's something that we all can be appreciative of, okay? The second thing, the second thing that we need the board's input on, as you have been previously advised, Lynn Fields, the current Social Services Director, is retiring as of the end of December. And we have already, on your behalf, gone out and put out an advertisement for the position, and I think next week, until the 13th or 14th of October. However, Mr. McClam, this is a position, many of the department head positions come under the direct purview of the county manager. You've got several positions, such as the attorney, where they work closely with the county manager, but they're basically hired by the board. The same is true for the Social Services Director and Health Director. So there's any number of ways you can go about completing the process. You may want to do all of the interviewing yourself and selection, or you may wish to do like we did the last time for the attorney, and what we did is we did some screening and came back and made a recommendation for the board to then come in and talk to the individual and make a decision. And all indications are, you've done right good for this young man that you hired right over here to my left. But we don't have to do that process. You can, the board can do all of the interviewing themselves, or you can endeavor to use staff, and if we use staff, I would encourage you to select one or two members to participate with Mrs. Delman and myself in this process to come back and make a recommendation to the board. If that is the case, that you want to do that, then I would recommend at the end of the meeting that we carry this meeting over till the first Monday in November, what is that, November the 4th, when our next meeting is? And maybe have a closed session with the board at 5:00 or 5:30 that afternoon, and then during the regular board meeting, if you decide you can make a recommendation or approve a selection, if you would like.
So you need a motion for us to approve that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'd suggest, as far as I'm concerned, the way we went with the attorney, that we allowed the staff to do that. So I'll make that motion, that we allow staff to do the interviews and present us with someone. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. I was going to ask Mark something I thought of too, talking about the water project down in Ivanhoe. We have a time limit on that of the end of 26 to spend all the money. Is this impacting it?
No, we shouldn't have no problem. We shouldn't have no problem completing the project before December of 2026.
Okay, I know, we've been trying to get this nailed down for how long?
A couple of years, because we received the grant in 2022.
We're going to lay 40 miles pipe, and we can't get to where we can get a bid out yet. That's kind of concerning to me. So what is the concern if we do not meet that timeframe? What happens then?
I am sure with this project, they will extend it. When we get closer to time, I'm pretty sure they will extend it if we need it extended.
That sounds good. That was my question. Does anyone else have any question? Thank you. We're now to the public comment section, and Ms. Hunt, you're up again.
Good evening. My name is Elaine F. Hunt. I reside at 7171 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey, North Carolina. I come before you as I have come, I'll say, days gone by, months gone by since 2022. And I come on behalf of myself, my family, and my friends. There's two roles of people out here who also live on Old Warsaw Road. And I realize as the world turns, there's nothing new under the sun. And so I'm coming singing the same old song, county water. For the people on the opposite end of Timberlake, we request county water. I'm glad to see that you're making some headway with Ivanhoe, but nevertheless, we desire county water too. I heard the gentleman talking about water, water, water in the western North Carolina, so that lets you know that water is not just a luxury, it's a necessity. And we need county water. Last week, went to one of the stores, they didn't have any water. I buy a lot of my water to drink, to wash in, do some of my clothes. I buy a lot of my water to drink, to wash in, do some of my clothes, but when you can't even find water in the stores, and then you don't have good water at home, what do you do? Realizing that water is a necessity. And I realize it's just so much you all can do, but at least show me that you're doing something. I know I will represent if he has spoken to me, and I appreciate that. But I see you all having conversation on this and that and the other. All of you giving input. At least show some concern for the people on Old Warsaw Road. And I, and my heart goes out to western states, and my prayers as well, but we deserve county water too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. All right, that ends our public comment section. Let me speak for a minute. Okay. Commissioner Gobert.
To Ms. Hunt, we did speak with Representative William Bryson. He did state that he had some grants on his desk, and he's working towards them. Now, how fast he works, I don't know, but we did have an opportunity to speak to him, and he said that.
Well, since you brought it up, I've been talking with the legislature for the last two years. The project for your area has been before them for two years, and of course, Representative Bryson is just one person of 135.
Right.
And of course, Senator Jackson is aware of it, and he's one of 50. So the money, the effort is put there. We have nothing we can do other than encourage them and speak to them about it, and every time I see them, I do that. But I go off the board in December, and someone else had to pick up the baton and run with it, and, but there again, it's slow, and of course, the situation is, there's no tax money going in it. We really have no means to change that, because it's all self-supporting. The people that are in the system, the money goes into a pot, that they accumulate money, and when they get money, they're trying to maintain the system, and the system is in a constant maintenance. Is that not correct, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
It requires constant maintenance, and we're going to have a problem with Ivanhoe when that comes off, just trying to maintain it. So it won't, the money that we get will not pay, the grant money will not pay for that. So that's coming down the road. But we understand, and we feel the same way. We want to get you some water, and as soon as we can get a grant, hopefully, it won't be too much longer. But anyway, I wanted to address that. I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? We're in closed session.